Please be upstanding for her worship of the Mayor and the Mayoral Party.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Borough Council. I'd like to welcome members, officers, any members of the public and those watching at home to tonight's meeting. Good, everyone make sure that their phones are on silent, please. Members need to remember that they can't tweet during the meeting, but the public can. Okay, I'd like everyone to check they have the following agenda documents, the main agenda and the supplementary agenda. May I remind all members that debates should be done through the Mayor and without interruptions, please? I would like to make sure that council meetings proceed fairly with opportunities for everyone to speak without disturbance. And on that subject, I think it's a good time to remind us all that we are formally committed to civility in public life. I would like us all to set a good example to others, so whilst it's fine for us to disagree politically, we must always do so in a respectful manner. I know I can rely on members to remember this when contributing today. May I also remind you that points of order can only be about breaches of the constitution or the law? And if members could keep speeches as short and to the point as possible, please. Thank you. We will now move on to the first item of the agenda. And agenda item one is apologies for absence. Apologies for absence have been received from councillors Lily Bar, Samir Chowdhury, Amy Croft, Germaine Lal, Balraj Sarai, Salman Shaheen and Amrit Mann. Are there any others?
Councilor Xharmid.
Thank you. And any others? Okay, lovely. May I draw members' attention to the document in the agenda on declaring interests? And so may I also ask if there are any declarations of interest from members about anything on the agenda tonight?
The apologies, Madam Mayor. We also have another apology from councillor Shri Bhaskarawal.
Thank you. So no declarations of interest, thank you. I'll move on to agenda item two, announcements. Do we have any announcements this evening? Okay. Councillor Rajuat, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I've got three very short announcements. Whilst he's not here, he's on holiday. This is the last Borough Council that Phil Cresswell, formerly our director of, I've got to get this right, Regeneration Housing and Environmental Services, will be at the council. He leaves at the end of the month. I'm sure members will join me in wishing Phil the very best in his new endeavours. He came on board to the council with just the Regen and Housing Brief with significant challenges in both housing and the Regen space. And I hope members will agree with me, actually, he has turned that around. We, under his stewardship, launched our prospectus of sites, our inward investment prospectus, and most recently our business case for growth as well. And he's done a lot of good work in the housing space as well as taking on environmental services as well. So just wanted to put on record on behalf of the council, our thanks to Phil and wishing him the very best for the future. My second announcement, members will be aware that our chief executive, Niall Woldra, is currently unwell. And I'm sure council will join me in wishing him a very speedy recovery. It's just to put on record that the Assistant Chief Executive, Maddy Skinner, has stepped up in an acting role. And we wish her every success in this new role and look forward to welcoming Niall back as well. And then finally, just on some personal news to do with my own personal career. I've recently been appointed to the executive of London councils. I'll be taking on the Health Brief, taking over from councillor Comer Schwartz of Islington, who's become the deputy mayor for policing. It's a great opportunity to highlight some of the great work that we in Hounslow are doing in the health and social care space, as well as getting learning from across London. The agenda is such an important one and will benefit our residents in the long run as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rajuat. Councillor Don, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two announcements to make. Firstly, I announce that we, the borough, have signed the local climate bond pledge from the Green Finance Institute. At the recent Hounslow Assembly, the executive director for finance and resources and I signed the pledge, which is to announce within eighteen months of signing, and we will do in a shorter time than that, for we will, in summer 2025, launch the Hounslow Local Climate Investment Scheme. The local climate investment will allow Hounslow residents with contributions starting from as little as five pounds to help raise a target of five million pounds over five years for the borough. Through the local climate investment, the community can actively support low-carbon projects that will improve lives, reduce emissions and create a more sustainable Hounslow whilst earning a return on their investment. Although officially launching in June next year, residents can already sign up now to register their interest and find out about the types of projects that will be supported. We'll be putting out an announcement about this tomorrow. So please do spread the word to your residents so that they can sign up and get more information. Secondly, another signing. We have this week signed the memorandum of understanding for the Thames Landscape Strategy Partnership with six other councils along the Thames from Weybridge to Kew, also including the Historic Palaces, Kew Gardens, the Port of London Authority and the Royal Parks. The Thames Landscape Strategy aims to conserve, promote and enhance for the future the Arcadian Thames, as this stretch of the river is known. This follows on from the thirtieth anniversary celebrations for the Thames Landscape Strategy, which were held in our borough at Scion Park in September this year. The event was attended by the TLS Thames Landscape Strategy patron, David Attenborough, who, following tradition, bestowed a horseshoe on the incoming chair of the TLS Executive Review Board, councillor Gabriella Giles. As the chairing of the board comes to Hounslow, councillor Giles and I have been working with officers to ensure that all relevant council departments are looped in so that the strategy and the development of the joint Thames strategies, or the refresh of the joint Thames strategies, which also brings in the Thames Strategy Q to Chelsea and the Thames Estuary Partnership, will all be a success. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Don. Councillor Ragwin Desidu, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a lead member of Public Safety and Regulatory Services and Enforcement, I asked my fellow councillors to join me in supporting the sixteen days of activism against gender-based violence campaign which started yesterday. Madam Mayor, yesterday was a white ribbon day, a day which especially looks at an important role where men and boys can play in reducing violence against women and girls. Last year, we have successfully awarded a white ribbon accreditation. Only six other boroughs in London hold such accreditation. And I'm very proud to share that I'm a white ribbon champion and I take my role very seriously. And I pledged to eradicating all forms of abuse and violence experienced by women and girls. Madam Mayor, I'm not alone in making this pledge. Tomorrow, I'm joining council leader Shantanu Rajuwat to host an event recognizing and celebrating with other male colleagues who have also become white ribbon champions. We have taken this stand because we recognize all forms of harassment, abuse and violence targeting women and girls is unacceptable and will not be tolerated. The impact it has can be devastating. And we know women and girls have been and will continue to be killed because of male violence in the world. We need societal change at a global level and make sure girls feel safe. Locally, Hounslow is making a big difference and we should be proud that we are contributing to a global fight. But I know we have very much more to do in this field. This is why these campaigns are very important in Hounslow. In next coming sixteen days of campaign, we'll be raising awareness on the different forms of abuse and violence women and girls are subjected to and how council and its partners can help. Over the years, Hounslow has been praised for services delivered to help those affected by domestic abuse. And more recently, a domestic abuse commissioner of England and Wales visited the borough. She said our holistic approach to domestic abuse was inspirational and our one-stop shop was doing amazing work. To show our commitment, the work to tackle violence against women and girls is outlined in Hounslow's corporate plan. And the borough's safer communities safety strategy, we also have dedicated Violence Against Women and Girls Plan, which is focused on three key priorities. Victims, survivors and children receive the right help, work together to stop violence against women and girls and taking strong action against perpetrators. We'll continue to promise this work because we want women and girls to be safe in Hounslow. To make this happen, I ask all men and boys to stand with me in this journey and make a pledge too. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Desidu. Is that all the announcements? Lovely. Okay, so I would like to conclude the announcements this evening with the sad news of the death of the former councillor Bobby Woson. Former councillor Woson served one term on the council, having been elected as a Labour councillor in the Hamworth Park Ward in 2006. Her stated aim as a local councillor was to give the isolated a voice. She served on the executive, as the cabinet was then known, and was the cabinet member for housing in 2002 to 2003. And then became the cabinet member for improving customer care from 2003 to 2005, when she then married and became known as councillor Awan for her last year in office. As an executive member, former councillor Woson oversaw the statutorily required best value review of customer services. She also helped launch the organisation Enough, based in Feltham, which aimed to provide support to people suffering domestic violence. Former councillor Woson served on the West Area Committee and was appointed to a number of partnerships and outside bodies, including the Multi-Agency Partnership Against Racial Harassment in Hounslow, Hounslow Community Police Consultative Partnership, the Association of London Government Culture and Tourism Panel, the Feltham Citizens Advice Bureau and the South West Crematorium Board. Outside of the council, Ms Woson was a lifelong campaigner for human rights and a local champion for gurkhas living in Britain. She was part of the successful campaign to provide all gurkhas veterans who served in the British Army before 1997 the right to settle in the country. Ms Woson's funeral was held on the nineteenth of October. She was sixty-seven at the time of her death. I would now like to ask Marina Sharma if she'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ex-councillor Bobby Woson lived in our ward of Brentford East. And although she had health difficulties most recently and a tragic fire that took her son's life a couple of years ago, she had moved back into the property and was looking forward to the future. I popped in to see her a couple of months ago and it was a pleasure to be able to be in her company. As you have said, Madam Mayor, she did a lot for the community. And she loved her cats and she was rehoming them. So as I spoke to her, my thoughts go out to her family and friends at this devastating time.
Thank you, councillor Sharma. If nobody else wishes to speak, on behalf of all members, I would like to extend our thoughts and condolences to the friends and family of the late former councillor Bobby Woson. We will now stand for one minute. Thank you. We'll now move on to the next item. Agenda item three, the minutes. We now come to the minutes of meetings of the council held on the twenty-third of July 2024 and the seventeenth of September 2024. May I ask members if they have any corrections they wish to propose? Councillor Bidov, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's not a correction as such, but it's a request that all documents be labelled at the bottom or at the top so we know what we're looking at at any one time. And if the numbers could be added to pages, because it's very difficult looking through. This arose, it's risen numerous times, but it arose again today, looking through the minutes. If pages aren't numbered and you don't know where you are.
Thank you.
If I could apply across all that we do, that would be great. It has been mentioned before in scrutiny.
Thank you, noted. Anybody else? Councillor McGregor?
Yes, Madam Mayor. On page fourteen, if memory serves me correctly, at the top of page fourteen, councillor Rajuat congratulated three of the electorate. Did he not also congratulate Rachel Reeves of being the first lady chancellor? I believe he did. And that's obviously the kiss of death for any politician in central government. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. Noted. Okay, may I now ask members to agree the minutes? Lovely, let's move on. Agenda item four is petitions. So are there any new petitions to present today, please? Councillor Lukey.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for this. I'm not got anything to present, but I'm still waiting. And so the residents who signed the petition from about three council meetings ago, it's a petition from residents of Bassett Gardens regarding the junction with Jersey Road. If someone can fish it out and chase for it, I did ask officers today in the traffic team, but it may have been taken away with the former assistant director of traffic. But if head of democratic services can look it up and if he needs any assistance, give me a shout, please.
Noted, councillor Lukey. We'll look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the second part of the process. We have no petitions for consideration at the council meeting itself this evening. And now may I ask members to note the petitions listed in the report and also in the supplementary agenda? Thank you. Agenda item five is the Treasury Management Midyear Report. And councillor Rajuat, if you'd like to propose and introduce the report?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, sorry. Yes, this is the Treasury Management Midyear Report. This covers the period from first of April to the thirtieth of September. It is a very technical report, but a very important report that details the council's treasury management activity in terms of borrowing and investments, both treasury-related and non-treasury-related as well. Due to a quirk in the calendar, this has been to Audit Governments Committee before going on to Cabinet and now to council. To draw out some highlights, the report talks about our investments. There was also a strategic decision in this period made to divest from a multi-asset income fund because of bad performance. And that's the monitoring that our officers do continually to protect the taxpayers' money, basically. But I can report that no prudential indicators have been breached in the year and I formally move the report.
Thank you, councillor Rajuat. Councillor Bruce, would you like to second the report?
Yes, very happy to second and reserve my right to speak.
Okay, if any members would like to comment on and discuss the report? Councillor Todd, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. That was an incredible statement, Madam Mayor. My glasses are very poor. I do apologise. I think that was a masterful statement by the leader, that they took determined action to prevent any further loss. Some years ago, Clive Porfrum bought twenty million pounds' worth of a stock. He was parking some money due to Hounslow Homes, Hounslow Highway, sorry. Over the years, that twenty million went down to nineteen eighteen sixteen. And finally, when the oversight and strategic direction of the leader and his team looked at it, they sold it for a mere sixteen. And so for an investment over five or six years, they lost twenty percent of that money. Now, there are lots of issues about why is the Treasury Department dabbling with income. But as the leader says, to be fair, it is a complex report and it's a complex subject. And it's a subject that the Stock Exchange elsewhere goes with risk. I'll just make a few other points. At one stage, we went up to eighty million pounds' worth of securities, stocks and shares. I'm not quite sure who gives the officers advice and guidance. You'll see in the report, we commission an outside agent to advise on interest rates. The correlation between the two and securities is not clear. But more fundamentally, there's a document that came out some years ago, which is frequently amended, the One Hounslow Financial Strategy. So that's how interesting that One Hounslow, the project directs the financial strategy. And it's quite clear in my interpretation that they were not to use our money to invest. If you stand back from that statement and look through the report again, there's some contradictions. What the report says, it notes over the last year, they've had to increase the borrowing. So how are we buying, we're borrowing from the bank and buying shares at the same time. That seems duplication and additional risk. From my role, I'm a member of the Audit Committee. And the leader mentioned this report had, or part of it, had been to the Audit Committee. What he didn't say is that this twenty-three-page report was not sent to members of the Audit Committee too late on the day of the meeting. And we had to absorb that detail. I accept, to be fair, there is issue about timing, but it was to get it on the same day, to read twenty-three pages of complex, I thought was unfortunate, and I regret that. The request I want to make, and I have made it leader before, is I'd like some clarification as to whether, how the team in finance is able to buy multi-asset funds, legal and general funds. But more fundamentally, I may be wrong in my interpretation. But what I can't handle is, when you go through the report, you'll see these individual stocks listed and a value given, a value. Now, if you, if you look closely, they've gone up and down, to be fair. What we've never been given is the actual cost. And so I think we're entitled to have the cost of that for, for people like myself and others who read these things to come back. I'm very happy to discuss it with you. There we are. That's my contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Would anyone else like to speak on this? Okay, then I invite councillor Rajuat to sum up, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I appreciate councillor Todd's intervention. We'll probably need to have a conversation outside just to go into a bit more detail. But just to reassure members, a lot of the strategies around our activity in borrowing is set in the Treasury Management Strategy, which goes as part of the budget papers. And that gets tracked through. On the specifics of the question that he asks, I will obviously come back to him. And if other members want to cite that, very happy to do so. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Chowdhury.
So I just wanted to correct what councillor Todd said, because we didn't receive the report on the day. We actually received it the Friday before. It was a late addition to papers. It wasn't a week in advance, but it wasn't on the day.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody. If members could note the report. Thank you. Okay, so agenda item six is the approval of Statement of Gambling Principles. Councillor Ragwinder Sidhu, would you like to introduce the report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Council's Statements of Gambling Principles provides guidance to the, to the applicants, licence holders and residents on how the council approached its licensing function, functioning under the Gambling Act two thousand and five. It approves three licensing objectives set in the Gambling Act, which are preventing gambling from being a source of crime or disorder, being associated with crime, ensuring that gambling is conducted in a fair and open way, and protecting children and other vulnerable persons from being harmed or exploited by gambling. We are required to prepare and publish this statement at least every three years. And our current statement expires in May two thousand and twenty-five. In the line of the Gambling Commission's guidance, our revised statement must be in place by end of January two thousand and twenty-five. If a new statement is not in place in January two thousand and twenty-five, we will not be able to carry out our licensing functions under the Gambling Act two thousand and five. Madam, I move the report.
Thank you, councillor Sidhu. And would councillor Siddiqui like to second the report?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I second this report and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. Okay, so if members would like to comment on or discuss this report? No? Okay. In which case, we have one recommendation to vote on. So, yes, votes for? Votes, any votes against? No? Any abstentions? Lovely. Thank you very much. We move on to the constitutional review tranche three. Item seven, I'd like to start by expressing my thanks to both group leaders, who have very kindly confirmed where there has been cross-party support for this item, as they have been working collaboratively on the proposals before members today. I'm grateful to them both for their cooperation. I would like, therefore, to suggest that we go straight to the vote. Great, marvelous. Okay, so councillor Rajuat, do you want to propose the report?
The constitution one?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, sorry, Madam Mayor. Yes, I do formally propose and again echo your thanks to the group. It's a rare, rare bit of peace that's broken out between the two parties. We've worked really well on this. And it's just to highlight that this would have, in our original plan, been the final part of the constitution review. We're actually extending it out a little bit more so that we can go deeper into sections. But we worked very well together, and I'm grateful to opposition colleagues who have worked so closely with us on this.
Thank you. As we propose, councillor Thompson, would you like to second the report? Thank you. So we'll move to the vote. All those four? Thank you. Anyone against? Lovely. And any abstentions? Marvelous. Thank you very much. And the next item is agenda item eight, a reference from the last meeting of the Audit and Governance Committee on the matter of the review of polling places and districts in the borough. And again, councillor Shanty Rajuat, could you propose?
Yep, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. We are obliged, our, our elections team, who do a fantastic job, are obliged to regularly review polling places. That's not to say that this report represents the one opportunity. They are constantly under review and being looked at and consulted on. As you mentioned, this has gone before the Audit Committee, and I'm grateful for the work that they've done on this as well. And I move it formally to council.
Thank you, councillor Rajuat. Councillor Unser Chowdhury, would you like to second the report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to second the report and also thank the officers and Cully and her team for the hard work they've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And would anyone like to comment on or discuss this report? Lovely. Okay. So if people would like to, if members would like to vote on the one recommendation, which collectively covers all wards, so votes for? Marvelous. Any votes against? And any abstentions? That's lovely. Thank you very much. We now come to agenda item nine, which relates to the appointment of the next Director of Law and Governance. It's been drawn to my attention that in paragraph four point three of the report, there's a small typographical error in that Ms Edwards is referred to as Mr Edwards. I ask members to note the correction. Councillor Rajuat, would you like to propose?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Yeah, really pleased to bring this report in wishing Rachel McCoy all the best in her new role. We obviously have to replace section one five one officer. There was a member panel convened. On that member panel was myself, councillor Bruce, councillor Giles from the opposition and councillor Samia Chowdhury. We came to the unanimous decision that Ms Benita Edwards should be appointed to the role. And we really do look forward to welcoming her. Members will know the name Benita Edwards because she has worked here previously. She was our principal planning lawyer. So those of you that have been on the Planning Committee will know her. So she does know the patch, as it were. She knows Hounslow. And from what I understand, she's very excited to take up the role. She's also developed at her current role where she is deputy monitoring officer. Whilst I've got the mic, Madam Mayor, although she's not leaving right now, I would like to put on record my thanks to our interim monitoring officer Louise Round, who has done a, is doing a fantastic job. You're not going just yet. We're keeping you for as long as we can. But it is important to say that continuity in such an important statutory role is so important, and you've been doing it brilliantly. So we look forward to welcoming Benita that handover, and thank you for all you do. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rajuat. And councillor Bruce, would you like to second?
Very happy to second. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any, does anyone have any comments they'd like to make? Lovely. Thank you very much. And so we'd just like to vote on this one recommendation. Marvelous. And any against? No? Any abstentions? No, thank you. Item ten, as both political group leaders have been consulted on these dates for the calendar of formal committee dates, I suggest we go straight to the vote. Agreed. So all those in favour? Marvelous. Anyone against? And any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. We now come to appointments to committees and other bodies. This is a standing item on our agenda. May I draw members' attention to the nomination in the agenda pages, which is for councillor Rajuat to be appointed as vice-chair of the Pension Fund Panel, and also to the additional nomination in the supplementary agenda, appointing councillor Lambert to the Housing and Environment Scrutiny Panel. Do we have any other nominations? No? Lovely. Do members agree, the nominations? Marvelous. Is that unanimous? Lovely. Thank you. Agenda item twelve is decisions taken under the urgency arrangements. If members could note the report listed on the agenda. Yes, okay, I'll take that. Thank you very much. And we now come to the part of the meeting where we deal with council questions. We have four questions this evening and a total of forty-five minutes to deal with them. May I ask councillor Giles to ask the first question, please?
Thank you very much for us bringing up. So giving the prolonged neglect and inadequate maintenance of the Brentford Fountain Leisure Centre, which has culminated in the need for costly redevelopment, which is not quite estimated, but expected to be around three point three million over the next seven years to keep it operational. What measures are being implemented to ensure that other council-owned facilities do not suffer a similar fate due to deferred maintenance?
Thank you, councillor Giles. Councillor Tom Bruce, would you like to respond?
Yes, very, very happy to. Thank you, councillor Giles, for the question. The fundamentals of Brentford Fountain Leisure Centre are that it has been incredibly popular, loved and well-used over the past four decades. I certainly have very fond memories of using it myself. I shared some of these memories on social media, and as is the issue with social media, some positive feedback on my memories and some negative. But I'm sure lots of residents share those memories of that. And we know how much it's been loved by residents in, in our borough, in Brentford, but, but across West London as well. However, it is time to move on. Just to be clear about what's been proposed already and the things that we've said about Brentford Fountain Leisure Centre is that it's not closing yet. We're not doing that tomorrow or next week or next month. It is starting that conversation with residents, starting the process of looking at what can replace it. Because we know it's time for it to be decommissioned, it's time to move on, and it's time for us to give something of better quality back to our residents. Just to be, to talk about the question a little bit, that I think there's a bit of conflated understanding about what's happening here. It says culminating in a costly redevelopment estimated at three point three million in terms of operational. Well, we need to separate the redevelopment aspect from the money that's going to be used or the money that could be used to keep it operational for the next seven years. And those are slightly different things. The key is here, we could keep it going. That's very, very clear. That's what that three million talks about. It could be kept going for the next seven years. But that is a standstill position, and, and we think that residents deserve much, much better than that. In terms of leisure provision generally in our borough, we take that provision seriously here. Over the last decade, there's been significant investment in the refurbishment of Isworth, Hanworth, Chiswick and Brentford Leisure Centre and Pools, already a significant amount of money spent there, and the complete rebuild of Heston Leisure Centre, at significant cost, but giving to the residents a much greater quality of service and of building. I do, now I'm older, have a relatively long memory, going all the way back to two thousand and two, when I was head boy at Heston School and going to a meeting where the redevelopment of Heston Leisure Centre was talked about then. Very, very positive developments, things happening in the park at Heston, and it's very positive. Members of the school community came to a meeting in a, in a hall there, and we talked about that. We fast forward a few years, plans got developed, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, where there was real activity and potential, or very, very imminently, the centre being redeveloped. We get to two thousand and six, May two thousand and six. Sadly, Labour Group lost the council and the Tories had a coalition with some independent group. And what happened to that redevelopment? It got quashed. It did not happen. And took another ten years till two thousand and sixteen before it happened. So that shows the difference in our commitment to leisure and redevelopment in areas of our borough and, and what happened then with that Conservative Independent Coalition. On Brentford specifically, over the last four years, there's been a million pounds spent on maintenance and operational costs. That's on top of another million pounds you, public sector decarb, spent on public sector decarbon, decarbonisation scheme. I'll be able to say it at one point. And going back to this three million pounds, that projected spend for ongoing maintenance and operational costs over the next seven years. But as I've said, keeps us at a standstill position. We know that residents in Brentford deserve more, and we want to be able to give that to them. And that's why we're starting this process now to look at what the future holds for that site and that provision in that borough, in, in that part of the borough. Lastly, the question at the end does talk about how can we ensure this doesn't happen again and make sure we don't get into this position? Well, I take slight umbrage with that question. Prolonged neglect is not something that I've, you know, I've demonstrated that's not something that we do. We spend money where we need to, but also where we know is going to add significant value to our residents' quality of life. We've shown that over the past decade. We continue to show that. And we have council budgets of around two million pounds in our, in our budget, sorry, for a variety of assets across the borough. And where there's leases in place and we have tenants, we expect them and part of those lease arrangements are for them with, along with service charges or whatever mechanisms there is in place for those people, for those groups to continue to contribute to the maintenance of those buildings. So I am assured that we are doing all that we can on council-owned assets. We will continue to do that. And as I've demonstrated and said tonight, we put council assets, leisure services, libraries, whatever, at the heart of our decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. Councillor Giles, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, thank you very much. And I appreciate the history lesson, I think myself and many people in the east of the borough may still remember the campaign that we raised, we had in the early noughties to keep Chiswick Newport alive, which was at risk of closure at the time, and we managed to save it. And it has been a fantastic asset to the community in the east of the borough, as has Brentford Leisure Centre, as many of us who visited recently were able to share our memories of learning to swim there and friendships formed. I, I think what I'm struggling with is that we've been promised improvements and plans on this site for a number of years. And I find that there's some inconsistency in the expectation that it will be there as a site that we can continue to use. Not only because we've just approved our list of polling places, which outlines the Brentford Leisure Centre as one of those locations for democratic services.
Is there a question? Is there a question?
And there is a question. So I guess, I think fundamentally, I know that there will be a decision coming to Cabinet in early next year, but what are the suggestions on the table at this time for how the site will go on? Will it be used for planning or be kept as a leisure facility?
Councillor Bruce?
Absolutely, I'm fully committed to keeping it as a leisure site unless, unless another site were to come forward in the Brentford area and the leisure centre, leisure services could go there. I'm open to that. I don't believe, there is a site, which is why we're absolutely fundamentally wedded to the fact that that needs to deliver our leisure services in that part of the borough and will continue to do so. Absolutely no question about that whatsoever.
Thank you councillor Giles and councillor Bruce. I move on to agenda item 14. Councillor Mashiso to ask councillor Bruce a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The cabinet member for Culture, Leisure and Public Spaces says that spades will be in the ground to build a new Brentford Art Centre in the summer of 2025, whilst the area ward councillor says the situation with the proposed new site is still where it was seven years ago. So as the cabinet member in charge of regeneration, can councillor Bruce tell us who is right?
Councillor Bruce, please.
Thank you very much. Councillor Shaheen is right. In 2023, the council and Topland, the land over in Brentford Police Station, were ready to commence delivery of the police station with Peabody. An approved cabinet report in July of that year provided the path for this to succeed. However, Peabody stepped away due to business pressures and it put all of those plans on hold. Since then, the council and Topland have sought a replacement delivery partner for the Brentford Police Station site. However, given the pressure on bill costs and existing stock, the number of registered providers coming forward for that is very low and we know this is a difficult market, this is a difficult situation over the last couple of years to be in. Since the summer of this year, we have had very positive discussions with a South West London-focused registered provider and the GLA. That's what the cabinet report recently outlined. And all being well, a formal agreement with that delivery partner could be, should be, will be in place for next spring. So to keep momentum and to make the project attractive to prospective delivery partners, we've been very closely working with Topland to secure the necessary changes to the design responding to the Building Safety Act, which essentially is an additional stair call, but there are some other things as well. And that makes the planning consent fully implementable upon the disposal to a delivery partner. Furthermore, this will allow us to fix the spatial requirements to the art centre, which we are absolutely committed to delivering. Thank you councillor Mashiso.
Thank you councillor Bruce. Councillor Mashiso, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. So councillor Shaheen has become councillor Lambert, is it? I thought the ward member was councillor Lambert. But looking at the more specifics on this, is what's the sort of progress that has been made regarding this site acquisition? Can the lead member give us a bit of assurance at least that he says spades are in the ground? Could the lead member please point me to that spade? Or is he calling a spade something else?
Thank you councillor Mashiso. Councillor Bruce?
I mean, I've no idea what the question was asking, but I think.
I repeat the question. Can I repeat the question, Madam Mayor?
I heard the word, I heard the word, can I give assurance?
Madam Mayor, can I repeat the question, as it isn't here?
I absolutely can give assurance that we are in advanced stages. This is what we spoke about cabinet, this is what the cabinet report says. We are in advanced stages with a delivery partner in order to ensure that the police station site can come forward as a viable scheme to ensure that it gets built out with an art centre and the delivery of housing on the other sites come forward as well. Absolutely happy and delighted to be able to give that assurance this evening.
Thank you councillor Mashiso and councillor Bruce. And agenda item 15, councillor Joanna Bedalf to ask councillor Tom Bruce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Earlier this year, the Labour Government proposed a 41% cut in Hounslow's housing target, which was followed by the news that in the first six months of 2024, the mayor of London started barely 600 affordable homes across the whole of London. Given that the borough's population has increased from 260,000 to 300,000 since 2018 and that the council is actively aiming to increase that local population further, what plans does the cabinet member for assets regeneration development have to clear waiting lists for social housing so that families needing three-bedroom or four-bedroom homes aren't kept in unacceptable accommodation limbo for up to 10 years, affecting their mental and physical health and denying them the ambitions they have for their lives and their children's futures?
Thank you councillor Bedalf. Councillor Bruce, please.
Thank you very much councillor Bedalf. The reforms that were proposed as part of the government's consultation on those reforms to the national planning policy earlier this year do not reduce Hounslow's, Hounslow Borough's housing targets. The housing targets remain exactly the same. As I've explained previously, I think via email, but certainly in person, and I'm happy to do so again, along with all London boroughs, Hounslow's housing target is derived from the London Plan. So the government's consultation proposals make it clear that for areas covered by a spatial development strategy, which the London Plan is, this will continue to provide the housing required for emerging local plans. In practice, this means that Hounslow still needs to plan for its London Plan derived targets, which is 1,782 homes per year from 2019 to 2029. Our emerging local plan proposed to adopt this as our housing requirement and therefore there's no change to the housing target and the same will be true for all London boroughs. Now, talking about housing statistics briefly, as of March 23, we had around 2,500 affordable homes approved, ready to be built out over the next few years and of these, 585 were in the social rent category. 555 affordable homes started on site in that year and 432 were completed in that year. So from a previous iteration and previous plans. In terms of council homes, specifically council homes, we had 1,000 home target between 2018 and 22, which we delivered. Of these, 197 were three-bed and 37 were four-bed. And in this administration, 2226, also plans pledged to build 1,000 council homes, 533 have been secured, which 146 of those are three-bed, 28 four-bed, and we expect to deliver roughly another 500, getting over that 1,000 target by the end of this administration. And just talking about registered provider pipeline, we work closely with a number of partners and currently have 707 affordable homes on site and expect them to complete in the next two to three years. There we go.
Councillor Bedalf, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, it may just be to repeat the main question because I'm not sure you answered the question there, to clear waiting lists for social housing, specifically for people who need three and four-bedroom homes. That's the point. And in terms of targets, our understanding is that targets are still lower than they used to be.
Okay, your understanding is wrong and they're not, they're still the same, as I explained in the question. In terms of clearing the housing need that we have, what are we doing? We're trying to build homes. I mean, that's what I talk about constantly. Trying to build homes for people, trying to build one-bed, two-bed, three-bed and four-bed, as I've described, to ensure that the people who live in this borough, who are in dire need of housing, get that need fulfilled. We are constantly doing that, constantly looking at how we can bring things forward and continue, will continue to do that, working with developers, working with RPs, working across the sector to ensure that we get that delivery of homes of all sizes and all ten years. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bedalf and councillor Bruce. And move on to agenda item 16. I'd like to ask councillor Emma Yates to ask her question, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can the cabinet member please provide us with an update on the progress of the Brentford Police Station site and the council's commitment to a new art centre in its place?
Well, I don't want to repeat myself, but you know, we're going to get, we're going to get it built and we have a way forward for doing that. So I don't want to go over that again. As a councillor in Brentford, I'm sure she'll be delighted to hear and other members will be delighted to hear about all the good things that we have done and all the things that we are planning to do in Brentford. And I'm happy to go through that list right now. In the last decade, in the last decade, just a few of examples of the things that we've looked at directly in Brentford, starting with the Gtech Stadium. I was, I was the chair of that planning committee and was delighted to be able to give that approval and bring that forward and go to games. I know councillor Williams enjoys many, many games there. But the fact that we have a Premier League football team in our borough, right in Brentford, is, you know, a huge testament to all the work that goes into that and the partnership working that we have, both with the club itself and with the Community Sports Trust. We also have the Ballymore Development, which was given permission around the same time, Waterman's Park Development, the outside space there, the cycle routes that councillor Dunn and her team have been working on, and the investment in school places in that area, both in the primary over the past 10 years, both in the primary and secondary sector. For next year, we have 100 years, we have celebrations planned, ready to mark, 100 years of the Great West Road. It was opened 100 years ago next year. The Golden Mile, it's been a hub for pioneering industries and businesses since its inception in 1925. So Golden Mile 100 will honour this legacy while looking ahead to the future. And there's a programme of events and initiatives designed to engage the community, attract tourism and highlight the area's potential for future development and investment. Making the strategic case for investment in the Great West Corridor and West London Orbital, we're also working in partnership with the GLA, TFL, West London Alliance and other partners. And beyond Brentford, and I know councillor Yates is a Brentford councillor and specifically asking about stuff going on in Hounslow, but looking further afield, the leader mentioned it earlier, the business case for growth, an initiative, a strategy that we have pushed forward only a month or so ago. And some of our focus will be on that Golden Mile, but also across Inter Feltham, looking at our town centre refresh, town centre masterplan refresh and acknowledging the completion and opening of a suite of projects across the community there, including on Feltham Green and the eco cabin there and a new community hub. So there's plenty of activity in Brentford. I know, I know, Madam Mayor, that the councillor who complains, was it a meeting ago or two meetings ago, about being the only one who's always interrupted, ironically is now interrupting me. Don't we find that, isn't that? So lots going on in Brentford, lots has been going on in Brentford already, lots to look forward to, both in Brentford and across the borough. Thank you councillor Yates.
Do you have a supplementary question councillor Yates?
No.
Thank you councillor Yates and councillor Bruce. Now we move on to motions. We have three motions to consider this evening and only 30 minutes in which to discuss them. May I ask members to bear this in mind when making contributions and remember that contributions should be under five minutes, please. So the first motion can be found at agenda item 17. I invite councillor Rajawat to propose the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm really grateful for the opportunity to propose this motion on the first Labour budget in 14 years. But more importantly, the first steps in fixing the foundations of our country after the decimation brought about by 14 years of forced Tory austerity. Public, it was forced, it was a decision. Public services are absolutely the backbone of our society and something our residents across our fine borough absolutely rely on. We all know this from the casework we receive from our residents. But Madam Mayor, the simple truth is that for the last 14 years, we saw our public services stretched to absolute breaking point. Services that families and communities relied on were cut, underfunded and left struggling to survive. The Conservative Government, under the banner of austerity, claimed that these cuts were necessary, but all they did was erode the very systems that people depended on most. Our nurses, teachers, social workers and countless other public servants were left overworked and underpaid. Waiting lists in the NHS remained stubbornly high and councils across the UK of all political stripes on the verge of bankruptcy. Backlogs in the criminal courts at record levels and prisons at bursting point. It's important to note though, that the budget that was proposed by Rachel Reeves is not an overnight fix and we know that. As much as I'm sure both Rachel Reeves and Keir Starmer would love to clip their fingers and return our public services to the gold standard that existed prior to 2010, it is unfortunately not going to be possible. But the work has started. There is much good in this budget that the Conservatives have willfully ignored to try and divert attention from their dreadful years in power. And I will list them because they are important. For us in local government, core spending power will increase by an estimated 3.2% in real terms. That includes 1.3 billion pounds of new grant funding with 600 million pounds earmarked for social care and 700 million for general services. There'll be an additional funding of 233 million for homelessness prevention. These are all services that we interact with. An additional funding of 1 billion pounds for SEND and alternative provision. The small business rates, our borough is, the backbone of our borough is our SMEs and small businesses. So the small rate, business rates multiplier will be frozen and retail hospitality and leisure businesses will receive a 40% business rates relief. Keep that in mind for the next motion, by the way. And councils will be compensated accordingly. Business rates more generally will be reformed from 2627 to include lower multipliers for high-street RHL businesses funded by an increase on ratable values over 500,000. There will also be additional funding of 500 million for the Affordable Homes Programme, as councillor Bruce just mentioned. Importantly, right-to-buy discounts will be reduced by government and local authorities, like us, will be able to retain 100% of right-to-buy receipts. Employer national contributions, employer national insurance contributions will increase by 1.2% in 2526 and public sector organisations are expected to be compensated for this. Again, keep that in mind for the next motion. The UK Shared Prosperity Fund, the bit that was, from Brexit, that we were meant to be keeping, that they wanted to scrap, has been continued, albeit at a reduced level, but it has been continued and that is vital money. And local roads maintenance funding will increase by 500 million in 2526. And importantly for London, TFL will receive 485 million for its capital renewals programme in 2526. So much TFL work was stalled because they didn't want to fund London properly. So in closing, and I know you asked us to keep it brief, this budget that sets us up on the path to renewal. And that's why this Labour administration, with so much good work going on, will carry on working with our new Labour Government to strengthen the services our residents in Hounslow expect and absolutely deserve. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Rajawat. I would now like to ask councillor Stroud Turp to second the motion, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I second this motion, but I will reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. So if members would like to debate the motion, councillor Thompson?
We have to, don't we? You know, if I were you, I'd just really keep quiet about this budget. We're asked in the motion to congratulate the Chancellor on delivering a budget which will start the return of this country to prosperity. This is the budget. This is the budget that has led big business, including Tesco, Next, Marks and Spencer's, to warn the Chancellor that the plans will cost jobs, raise prices and lead to shop closures. This is the budget that has got entrepreneurs and company owners queuing up to tell the Chancellor that her tax raid will hit recruitment, damage investment and potentially force them to close. This is the budget that has led to the boss of Mike Vittis to say that Britain has become a less attractive place to do business. This is the budget that we're meant to be congratulating, that led the chief executive yesterday of the CBI to state this budget is undermining the government's own mission to get people into jobs. This is the budget that's got thousands of farmers on whom we depend protesting in Westminster. This is the budget that the Office of Budgetary Responsibility has said is unlikely to lift the economic growth for the next five years. This is the budget that's going to make staff in hospitality, retail and the care sectors begin to worry about their jobs and their futures. This is the budget that's going to impact, as we're going to mention a bit later, on the services provided to the most vulnerable people in our country because of the impact it's going to have on the charity sector. The charity sector employs 1 million people and delivers around 7 billion of services in areas such as, as we all know, social care, addiction, health, homelessness and hospice care. And the charities estimate that they're going to face an additional bill of 1.4 billion as a result of these changes, which we are supposed to be congratulating the Chancellor on. Today, on the seven ten train from Kew Bridge to Vauxhall, you meet interesting people. And it was wonderfully, as it normally is, it was on time. I met a person people might know, won't mention her name because I said I wouldn't, but she's now the CEO of a leading charity. She did quite well after she left this part of the world and went on to other things. And she said to me that they've worked out that this budget, this budget that we're meant to be congratulating, is going to cost them 1,000 pounds for every person they employ. This is the budget that's going to take a quarter of a million pounds out of the charity that they use to transform lives. This is the budget that's led to the hospice movement telling us that they are going to have to close. And at the time when we're debating other major social changes in this country, how bonkers is that? Marie Curie has said that this budget will have a detrimental impact on the amount of care they are able to provide. And their chief exec continued, it makes no sense to levy a tax hike on nurses who are delivering hospice care because they're not part of the National Health Service, so they're not going to be protected. This is the budget that's leading GPs and pharmacists to demand that they too are exempted from this national insurance contribution rise. Otherwise, primary health services will suffer. I think poorly paid staff in the private sector might be struggling to understand how on earth it is that a Labour Party is potentially putting them on the brink. But I guess they don't need to worry because apparently the hard thing has been done. Apparently, we're back on firm footing. And now all we have to do is sit back and watch the economy grow. Grow relies, as most of us actually do realise, on a strong private sector. This tax hike in total of 40 billion pounds is going to stifle that growth. Higher taxes mean fewer jobs and fewer jobs are going to mean less public services. Maybe this budget is a reminder that even the worst Conservative government is better than a Labour one.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Councillor Emma Siddy, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am very pleased to support this motion and the Labour government's new budget. A difficult budget, yes, but at the aim of start of a long, hard work to fix the mess that the Tories had left us after fourteen long, hard years for our residents. I'm not only a councillor, but I stand before you as a carer, someone who provides hand-on dedication support for the most vulnerable in society, those who need help with their daily lives, whether due to illness, disabilities or ageing. It is often unseen wrong and far too long it's been unfunded and under valued. Our adult social care system, a system which so many of our residents rely on, have been discriminated by years of absentee and neglect. This is why I am happy to see additional funding that Rachel Reeves, our first female councillor, and her budget announced a welcome of 1.3 billion extra for local authorities next year, which will include 600 million ring funds for adult and children's social care. The disabled fertility grants of home adoptions to enable people to live independent will also increase by 86 million. I was especially heartened to hear that the support of millions of unpaid carers looking after friends and family, something close to my heart. There's a high personal and financial cost for unpaid carers. I am pleased that the budget announced that carers will be able to earn slightly more before becoming eligible for carers allowance, enabling to estimate 60,000 more people to receive it. We know that adult social care system can't be repaired overnight, but it is a welcome step towards reforming a virtual public service that has been ignored for far too long. It's a step forward to a better, fairer society where vulnerable are protected and the protectors recognise their failures. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Siddy. Councillor Emsley, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Where to start with this one? It's an interesting motion. And I think a lot of residents and businesses watching this at home will be as frustrated with this motion as they are angry. And I think they'll be frustrated because, once again, I think this is a common theme among all the meetings I've been in since I've been elected. The Hounslow Labour Party are using this council's time to stand on their soapbox, read off some pre-written lines from Labour Party HQ. This council is more than a place that just votes for the next letter that councillor Radoatt sends to the government. We should aspire to do more. But I also think residents and businesses will be angry because this motion is exceptionally tone deaf. It's tone deaf for the small businesses and charities in our borough, forced to shoulder hundreds of extra pounds per employee they employ. Tone deaf for the tens of thousands of pensioners in our borough, forced to choose between heating and eating due to their cruel cut to the winter fuel allowance. Tone deaf to the thousands of young families struggling to buy their first home, having to contend with an effective increase in stamp duty. And, I'm sorry councillor Bruce, a 41% cut in the government's targets for this borough's housing. Young families, pensioners, business owners, charity workers, all much worse off because of a budget that broke core promises and saw the largest tax rise in British history. But Madam Mayor, what is really telling about this motion is all of the things they've chosen not to mention. Because it doesn't mention the figures released by the government last week showing 100,000 pensioners being pushed into poverty due to this government's cut to the winter fuel allowance. It doesn't mention the letter from over eighty of the biggest retailers in the UK warning this budget will lead to higher food prices and job losses. Doesn't mention the 2.7 billion stealth tax on businesses due to the changes in business rates. Doesn't mention the CBI says Labour's job tax will force businesses to scale back hiring and damage growth. Doesn't mention that the government is forcing TFL to increase fares for transport in the city by 5%. Doesn't mention the potentially crippling 270 million pound cost to local authorities of the hike in national insurance. Doesn't mention that the Institute for Fiscal Studies says Labour's jobs tax will disproportionately hit the lowest paid. And of course, Madam Mayor, they didn't mention that Chancellor couldn't find a single reputable economist or think tank to back up her fantasy black hole, far from this being an economic necessity. The reality, of course, is that this budget was a political choice to punish businesses, punish pensioners, punish charities, punish the low paid and punish young families. And instead of standing up for those people in our borough, the Hounslow Labour Party has once again put their loyalty to their party above the needs of people who live here. Just like when they dismissed Chiswick as a backwater, they're now dismissing the thousands of people in our borough who will struggle as a result of this government's budget. Madam Mayor, local businesses, residents, charities need a council that stands up for them, not a local government arm of the Labour Party's press office.
Thank you councillor Emsley. Councillor Stroud Turp?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Now it's my turn at speaking. The leader of the opposition kept using the word this budget, this budget, this budget. I mean, you could echo back the last government, the last government, the last government. He also mentioned a 40 billion pound tax hike. I just want you to hold that number in your head, 40 billion pounds. And we'll come back to it in a second. What we've heard about the dire economic background left by the Conservative government, and it was left for three reasons. Incompetence, stand up for this trust. Utter recklessness, Richie Sunak. But worst, worst, a political doctrine that wanted to dismantle the public services of this country. That is what motivated them. That is what motivated them. And for councillor Emsley to say tone deaf, tone deaf, they couldn't even hear the orchestra when they were sat next to it when they were in government. They are totally tone deaf. But let's just put some numbers around this. According to some educational charities, the education system in this country is facing a 12.2 billion, billion pound funding gap. Seventy percent of our English state schools are now facing a financial future which they cannot see how to get out of. Stand fast, the Labour government is obviously going to help them. A hundred schools in September didn't open because the roofs were falling in. We have the largest class sizes in Europe. Congratulations, guys. Thanks very much for that. Let's turn to local authorities, something much closer to home. Since 2010, that horrible date, local government spending has dropped by 27% in real terms. It's also dropped by 50% from central government. We've got councils looking down the barrel of going bust. Councils have got a funding gap of 7 billion pounds, likely to increase by a further 4 billion. So an 11 billion pound funding gap. However, we do know the Tories aren't particularly keen on local authorities on education. But what about something they say they are keen on? Defence. According to the NAO, the National Audit Office, the MOD is looking at almost a 17 billion pound funding gap. And they were the ones who said, let's keep the country safe. Labour will sort that out again, but it's 17 billion pounds we have to find. Now, all this sounds pretty drastic, doesn't it? 17 billion, 12 billion, 11 billion, peanuts compared to the 446 billion, 446 billion that the medical council believes the NHS is facing a funding gap of. How do you square that? How do you square that? We have the lowest spending per head of population in Western Europe, thanks to the Tories deliberately trying to dismantle the NHS for their friends in America to come in with private health. So 446 billion, 12 billion, 17 billion, 11 billion. And apparently it's a tax hike, what did you say councillor Thompson, of 40 billion, not even scratching the surface really. This is a government that has taken some very, very, very difficult economic decisions to repair the damage done by their government. How they have the temerity to stand there and criticise it, I find jaw dropping, to be honest, jaw dropping. What, how did they think with some magic wand which would turn our economy back to a prosperity? That magic wand doesn't exist, gentlemen, ladies. It doesn't exist. We've got to take some hard economic decisions. We've now got a grown up government that's prepared to do it. We are not putting more onto the national credit card. This Labour government is having policies rather than mortgaging the future of this country, is investing in the future of this country. There will be some rocky, hard decisions to take, but we're taking them. And Madam Mayor, I commend this motion to council. And the worst thing at all, they've sat there and I find it personally incredible that they're criticising the budget and they've also put another motion in to criticise it. We're picking up the damage that they've created and they're criticising. Shameful.
Thank you councillor Stroud Turp. Councillor Mashiso, please.
Madam Mayor, you talked about civility. There, I rest my case. Sit down. Councillor Williams, civility, sir. Councillor Bowring, should I name you all? I'm happy to wait. So, yeah, I've got five minutes, I'm going to use all of it. So it was a pleasure to follow councillor Stroud Turp. It's good to see him animated, looking well. But he talks a lot about issues that I just don't quite understand. He puts figures together that are completely out of scale to even what the budget had actually set out with Rachel Reeves. I mean, Rachel Reeves herself is even distancing herself from her budget. She said just the other day that she would never again set such a budget as long as she's the Chancellor. Thank God for that, because this was the most costliest budget to face our recovering, growing economy. This budget, in my view, is a budget of envy. Envy because it hurts aspiration. Now, I'm a teacher. My pupils are watching this right now. And we know that as teachers... So councillor Lukey says poor kids. That's... Yes? Councillor Lukey calls out, say, Madam Mayor, are you paying attention to me? You talked about civility. You talk about civility and this is what the Labour members do to me. So this budget, like I said, is about hurting aspiration of our country. As a teacher, I've got young pupils who are watching this right now and a lot of parents who struggle day and night just to make ends meet, just to fit the fees of the schools of places like where I work. They're being hurt by this 20% tax hike on private school fees. Now, members in the House here might not understand this. However, the minute you tax 20% on parents, where do you think the pressure is going to go to? Now councillor Stroud Turp talks about class sizes and numbers in the state sector. I'm a governor in a state school and I know the pressures of a state school and the places that that is having an impact on. When that 20% tax hike is applied to those aspirational families who are just making ends meet, it means that they have to turn to the state sector and put more pressure on the teaching staff, on the support staff. And we talk about SEN needs. Well, guess who's taking most of the SEN needed children? It's the private sector. And so this budget hurts not only the aspiration, but it hurts the entire community. So let's look again at what they're celebrating. They're celebrating the fact that after, what, just two months of this new budget? What have we got? We've got the costs going up of borrowing. The cost of borrowing has gone up already at 2.2%. And this is the exact effect of the actual budget. As councillor Thompson has already mentioned, the... As councillor Thompson has already mentioned, the reaction from businesses, the reaction from the private sector, even the reaction from charity sectors are warning us that this budget is not good for them. So what do we, what can we do? Do we just continue celebrating and writing letters to the Rachel Reeves or to Keir Starmer? Or do we stand up for our residents in Hounslow? Or do we stand up and support our residents? Do we help them with making sure that there's valuable money, with anything that goes out of their pockets? These is not our money. This is taxpayers' money. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is taxpayers' money. And you see, the Labour members here, they have no idea how to deal with taxpayers' money. All they know is increasing taxes on every single aspirational individual, hurting themselves without them knowing it. They should leave the management, the financial management to us, because we know.
Time's up councillor Mashiso. councillor Mashiso, please sit down. Your time is up.
They've increased, Madam Mayor, they've increased their budgets.
Your time is up. You've had your time. Thank you. Right, I would just like to let you know there are five minutes left for motions.
Mayor, can I move to suspend standing orders?
So that would be for motions and to extend the meeting to eleven o'clock. Thank you. Thank you. Are we all agreed? Thank you. Sorry, who disagrees? So one disagrees. Any abstentions? Okay, so we are extending standing orders. What would you like? Everybody else is happy to extend, that you put your hand up and said you disagree.
Yes, I, I, I would like to see a vote taken. That's the law. We're doing it.
All those in favour? All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. So the motion is carried. And so I would like to ask councillor Sarah Russell.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, just following on what we're all talking about. It is my privilege to speak today about the October twenty twenty four budget presented by Rachel Reeves, the Chancellor, the Labour Chancellor, which stands for a more balanced budget for all in Britain that puts people first and aims to restore the public trust in the government's ability to deliver for all. First and foremost, October budget underlines the government's responsibility to ease the financial burdens on family. We have all seen the impact of rising energy costs, soaring inflation and stagnant wages. The Chancellor has proposed a series of bold measures to address the issue head on. One of them is the increase of the national minimum wage, which will help low-income residents in Hounslow. We all know that the strong public sector is vital to the wellbeing of the nation. Over the years austerity has eroded public services, leaving our NHS schools and social care systems under strain. The Chancellor's budget acknowledges this and presents a clear plan for reinvestment. One of the most striking elements of the budget is the commitment to fully funding public services, especially our NHS. The budget not only proposes an immediate increase in funding to tackle the current backlog in healthcare, but also outlines a strategic plan for long-term change that includes investing in healthcare workers, ensuring that they have the resources and support they need to deliver a world-class care. Plans to increase funding for schools and provide extra support for disadvantaged and send students. This budget signals a clear break from the neglect of the past fourteen years. A well-educated population is the foundation of a prosperous nation. And this Labour government is taking the necessary steps to secure the future of our young people. As the world grapples with the reality of the world of climate change, we have a unique opportunity to reshape our economy through green investments. This budget takes important steps toward, toward ensuring that Britain is set, is at the forefront of green innovation. From renewable energy projects to green transport and energy-efficient upgrades in homes and businesses, it is important to create resilience in future markets in green industry. And this Labour government will deliver it. Now, we all know that a budget is about balanced priorities, ensuring we invest in the right areas while maintaining fiscal responsibility. Rachel Reeves, the Chancellor, has struck that balance. She has outlined a credible, realistic path to managing the nation's finance without falling into the trap of austerity or reckless spending like the previous Tory government. This budget demonstrates a clear commitment to controlling debt and deficit. It also recognises that austerity measures cannot be the answer. Instead, the budget focuses on promoting growth through investment in infrastructure, innovation and skills development. This is a growth-oriented budget that seeks to expand economy while ensuring that the benefits are widely shared. The budget provides a real solution to the challenging face by working families, young, by working families, young people and communities left behind by the previous governments. It champions the right to decent housing, decent pay and decent living standards for all. It recognises that when we invest in people, we invest in the future. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'd like to ask councillor Radua to sum up now, please.
Well, Madam Mayor, what a masterclass from our opposition on how not to debate a motion. So desperate are they to forget their fourteen years, they couldn't bring themselves to reference it once. They accuse us, they accused us of couting out lines from the Labour press office. Every single one of them had CCHQ lines in front of them. So absolute rubbish. I'm going to take no lectures. But, but there is a serious point, there is a serious point councillor Mashiso, keep smiling. We love it when you smile. But they accuse us of being tone deaf. The sad reality of it is that you are all completely tone deaf and you are trying to rewrite history. And never will we let you forget your legacy and how you destroyed this country. Let's not forget. Let's not forget. They want to talk about Rachel Reeves. Let's talk about Liz Truss. Let's talk about how she actually crashed the economy. How many people suffered and not a single apology from any of them. They want to talk about Rachel Reeves. I don't see this building crashing in. I don't see the economy crashing in as a result of this budget. In fact, there is confidence that we are taking the right decisions at the right time to ensure stability. So we will not let you forget your legacy, but that's your legacy, not ours. We are forging forward in the interest of this country. And then they have the audacity to criticise this council's record, this administration's record. I mean, we've done more in a decade than you will ever do in a four-year term. We are investing in our young people. We are investing in housing. We are investing in our communities. They just want to sell off everything and privatise it. And that is the sad fact. But I'm not the judge of this. Our residents are. Fifty-two of us sat here, nine, ten, whatever over there, but also four hundred and eleven MPs. That speaks for itself. So you carry on trying to revise the history. We will never let you forget.
Thank you councillor Radua. I'd now like to move to the vote. So I would like to ask who's voting for the recommendations? Thank you. And against the recommendations? Are there any abstentions? Can we have some order, please? Thank you. No abstentions. Thank you very much. Motion is carried. So we move on to the second motion of the evening, which can be found at agenda item eighteen. Members will also observe on the supplementary agenda, an amendment to this motion has been proposed. I now therefore invite councillor Bidolf to propose the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this is original and not from CCHQ. There is something wrong with the policy, others have said it, when over eighty leading retailers write to the Chancellor about the damaging impact on their businesses of the budget, including increases to national insurance. At least twenty-three of them operate in the borough. Others have mentioned some, from Aldi and Asda to Majestic, Mountain Warehouse, Poundland, Primark, Richassand, Specsavers and The Works. We councillors must listen not just to these large collective voices, but also to small independent business owners. The owner of one cafe told me that his employer costs will increase by thirteen thousand pounds a year before adding utility price rises and food inflation, the ingredients he needs to open his doors to his customers, and his suppliers' costs, whose prices would also go up. Customers are very price sensitive, comparing costs between cafes and shops. When a business is only breaking even now, any price increase will reach the point at which customers stop buying. The cafe owner said, we'll be going round in circles. It's absolute madness picking on small businesses as if they have no value. A service business owner explained that all their costs had gone up, increasing the price of workshops for children. She said customers are paying more on other things in their lives, so with less money to spend, the workshops just aren't viable anymore. National insurance increases apply along every part of the chain, from the originating producers, including farmers, to the closing of the business door and switching off the lights at the end of a day's trading. It's compounded, ending with a higher price on the menu, the chalkboard, the label. There is no hiding place as business owners have no more give to give. This will affect not just our four main high streets, Hounslow, Chiswick, Brentford and Feltham, but also every smaller retail area, Bedford, Cranford, Hanworth, Heston, Isleworth, Osterley, a pharmacy, hairdresser, a barber, cafe, restaurant, a corner shop or small chain supermarket. These hyper-local parades, all with their futures now at risk. We need a shop local campaign. Very few residents know what we have where. Residents get used to their own favoured routes, seldom deviating. The council should support groups whose ideas it has ignored. In Chiswick, the shops task force is ready to go with ideas that would work across the borough. Footfall has not returned to its peak, and that's before twenty eighteen. We need to make our streets less hostile for going out, especially at night. Poor lighting, pavement, slippery front, unswept wet leaves, walking through weeds, waste sacks and litter, dodging unnecessary street clutter and the risks of crime. All are deterrents to spending in our local economies. We should make more of Christmas and other celebrations. And please remember, footfall is not the same as spend. We should hold events that bring spending to our bricks and mortar shops, not out-of-town traders who compete with them. Unwelcome as the fact is in this antique car borough, parking continues to be one of the most important factors encouraging local spending. As anyone interested in Chiswick knows, this continues to be eroded, and I will have more to say on this outside this chamber. Contrary to claims made at a previous Borough Council, the free thirty-minute stop-and-shop parking is not free. It costs fifteen p. This charge should be, it does, this charge should be stopped. That is not true. Sorry, I'm being interrupted, Madam Mayor. Can I have extra time while I have a discussion from the floor from somebody? Thank you.
Could we have some order, please?
It costs fifteen p. This charge should be stopped and free parking should be extended to and expanded in all retail parking streets or nearby and all council car parks. So how should the council deliver benefits to local businesses? Not through yet more workshops from consultancies that aren't even based in the borough. And that means not setting them up in short term, for the short term with an address in the borough to make it look as if they're local. The borough has its own consultancies, including sole traders who understand their areas and the needs of their local businesses. Let's support them in supporting our local businesses. Let's keep the Hounslow pound, which includes any pounds given to us by government, in Hounslow. On that point, I must refer to the fact that the council returned to the government one point two million of the final COVID grant for small businesses. This failure to benefit local businesses must never be repeated. There's no shortage of ideas within the borough. Suggestions for Chiswick, some of which would work across the borough, were made over four years ago.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. There is no more time to lose. I urge you to support this motion.
Thank you councillor Bidolf. councillor Giles, would you like second to?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm delighted to stand to support and second this motion. What a very interesting evening we've had. I think it's very interesting because we've spent half an hour at least debating a motion of which we don't have much actionable or tangible outputs. There's very little responsibility that we, as councillors, as elected members, have responsibility for. However, with the motion that councillor Bidolf and I spent a lot of time constructing to come up with ideas that we could actually implement in our borough, we have, by default, we believe, to have localised what we should be doing. And hopefully we'll be able to provide real tangible results for our residents. This has been a challenge for many, many businesses. I think, given the fact that it's almost a month after the budget was announced and companies are still and charities are still trying to unpick what it means for them, is quite astounding. I know we've heard lots of rhetoric about past Conservative governments, but I think it's also worthwhile reminding everybody that actually the economic state that the Conservatives inherited in two thousand and ten was a lot worse than in twenty twenty-four. And we had to deal with a global pandemic, which actually, we made the right decision to spend money at the right time. However, going back to this motion, I think it's very interesting to see what this is meaning in real terms. So if we look at the national insurance contribution for the employers, it, it accounts, it amounts to an increase of at least six hundred and fifteen pounds to the wage bill for employees for every employee earning at least nine thousand one hundred per annum. This doesn't take into consideration the general rate increase from thirteen point eight percent to fifteen percent, which may, may even have a bigger cost for businesses, but that, of course, will vary from business to business. And I also note that we've now got an amendment, which, aside from watering down and removing actions suggested by the Conservative group, it makes, it doesn't make any reference to the employment allowance, allowance increase, which, to be honest, is something that you could have stood up and lauded. And I do have to wonder, perhaps this is because while some organisations may benefit and appreciate the additional work needed to ascertain eligibility, it won't necessarily benefit local charities if the charity or the company is part of a group and the total employer's class one, N one liability, class one national insurance liabilities for the group must be more than a thousand, more, must be less than a hundred thousand pounds nationwide. So that impacts a lot of our charities that operate locally but that are part of a larger group. And let alone, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's, if you are a company that employs a cleaner or a nanny, this is not impacted under that, you are not eligible for that national insurance, for that employer's allowance, which impacts in underserved industries and especially given the cost of childcare and people who want to return to work, it has an added-on consequence. We don't, in the debate earlier, we heard that we will, in the public sector, benefit from the national increase relief. We don't know what that will be. There has been no decision on what those formulas are. And so therefore we don't know what the knock-on effect to us as a local authority is, let alone some of those other contracts that we may have with smaller companies that will be delivering services for us in and around the borough. Care companies do fall under that employer's allowance, but actually this is something that really will impact a lot of charities and other organisations. Just to go back to the amendment, and I'm sure we'll probably debate this later, this later. I think what's really interesting is that free parking should be free. And to be honest, if I'm using the app wrong, then please give us an education. Because my screenshot says that there were an additional fees of fifteen pence. And so therefore it's not free. And whether that's an administrative cost because the contract hasn't been managed properly, I don't know. But this is something that should be educated. And it will, and if, even if it depends on the type of car that you have.
councillor Don.
It should still be free.
Point of information. So it's for, it's for a text message that reminds you, you do not, you can turn it off. off.
Madam Mayor, that's an intervention, not a point of information, and councillor Giles has to accept it.
Well, I've said it now, I don't really care if she accepts it or not.
But in which case.
Madam Mayor, that's uncivil.
In which case, regardless of whether you can turn it off or not, are we educating our residents about this? You know, I'm not a tech, I am quite techie, let's say, and it's one of those things that if we're not using it properly, then if it's not a simple function to use, there is an issue with the system. So anyway, to go back to our motion, I, okay.
So we now come to the proposed amendment, which members can find in the supplementary agenda. I invite councillor Rajuat to introduce it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll try and keep this as brief as possible. This amendment's actually aimed to try and be helpful to the Conservative group. I think policy announcements will cause uncertainty, we acknowledge that, we're not trying to water this down, as councillor Giles has said, but there is a fine line between concern and scaremongering. And unfortunately, the original motion, I felt, was scaremongering deliberately, and a lot of their rhetoric this evening has been about scaremongering our communities out there. So this is trying to be as helpful as we possibly can, understanding that there are risks, there will be uncertainty and there will be anxiety there amongst our business community. Now, interestingly, I was at the West London Chamber Business Awards last week, celebrating entrepreneurship in the borough. The NIC contribution point that they say is so prominent in those cafes in Chiswick, there were so many Chiswick businesses there at those awards, it came up zero times. That's not to say that it's not a real concern and we have to be live to it, but I do feel like they are once again trying to push a rhetoric to scare and deflect from their record, and we should not allow that. Now, in terms of the steps that councillor Giles and councillor Bidolf talked about, I welcome them, I thank them, that's why they're still in the motion, but I do say very gently to them, we're already doing all of them. So if you spend hours doing it, you just needed to open the council website and have a look for yourself, because they're all actually there. So, you know, whilst this is tangible and this is great, actually, once we pass this amendment, I will sit down and I'll write a letter to myself, because I like doing that, and I'll say, well done, you've done everything that they asked for. So, you know, thank you very much for telling me exactly how I'll, how to do my job and what we are already doing and have been doing for quite a long time. And I think ultimately, the only thing I would say is, and it's advice, you can take it or choose not to take it, but in scaremongering and a lot of the rhetoric and the language that you've used this evening, you are talking down a borough which has one of the largest economies in London, certainly larger than most of our peers, and is, is growing, yes. What I would have liked is a motion around deprivation, that they don't want to talk about that, because they don't really care about deprivation, they don't really care about supporting our high streets, they want to just recycle what we're already doing and play it back to us. So take it, don't take it, that's up to you, we have been trying to be helpful in this, we understand there is anxiety out there, but the government also recognises that and will be doing all that they can, and we, as a, as a local authority, need to stand with government as these changes are introduced and really celebrate everything that is Hounslow.
Thank you, councillor Rajuat. I now invite councillor Bruce to second the amendment, please.
I'll second it and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. Councillor Bidolf, do you accept the amendment?
No.
Okay, we, we can now debate the proposed amendment only. Councillor Strata.
Can I move the question now, be put on the amendment, Madam Mayor?
Do I have a second? Okay. In which case, we now vote on the amendment. Sorry, yes, we're voting on the proposal to move to the vote on the amendment. So, everyone in favour? Lovely. Everyone against? Any abstentions? Marvelous. So the move to the vote now is carried, yes. Okay, so now we're voting on the amendment, yes, sorry, it does get so confusing. So everyone in favour of the amendment? Thank you. Everyone against? And any abstentions? Okay, so that motion is carried, the, we can now debate the motion as amended. Would anyone like to speak? Councillor Emsley?
Go on then, Madam Mayor, I'll speak. I thought we were going to go straight to the vote, so I, you know, I hadn't prepared anything, but I will just say, and it's a, no lines from CCHQ, no, I know, I know. You know, councillor Rajuat said he's trying to be helpful with this amendment, and I'm sure councillor Bruce would have said the same thing as well, if he'd spoken to it. We knew that there would be some party politicking for this motion, there was for the Windsor Fuel allowance, they removed all the criticism from the government, they added in the praise for, for Labour. That's fine, we don't mind, because we're here to source out local issues as local councillors. And if the price for that is that we have to accept a couple of amendments that talk about how great Labour is, how terrible the Tories are, fine, that's good for residents, good for businesses. But what we didn't expect from this motion was all of the wrecking changes they'd made to the actions that we'd proposed. So councillor Rajuat said he was being helpful. He's being helpful by replacing, extend the business, business advisory services to review business advisory services. That doesn't sound like it's better, that sounds like it's worse.
Point of order, please, Madam Mayor.
He said he's being helpful.
It's all very nice what's been said, but he's now speaking to the amendment as though it's not been passed. Councillor Emsley should now be speaking to the motion as amended. There was the opportunity to speak against the motion, it wasn't taken. We are now debating the motion as amended, and the rules on debate, this is quite clear, that the opportunity to speak against the amendment has gone, the amendment's been passed, we are now debating the motion as amended. To speak about the amendment is out of order.
Councillor Emsley can continue.
I think, I think councillor Strata hasn't read his own amendment, because we were, we were talking about that. I mean, I know they put it together pretty quickly, Labour's email probably coming through about thirty seconds before the meeting, but, but there we are. The only other point I was going to make, the only other point I was going to make was that obviously the other change that they've made is they've removed the promise to take proactive action to support Hounslow's businesses with the phrase, explore supporting Hounslow's businesses. They care about business as much as this government, not one single bit.
Thank you, councillor Emsley. And would anyone else like to speak to the amended motion? Councillor Bidolf. Are you summing up, councillor Bidolf?
No, I'm not summing, summing up. Okay.
I don't think anyone else wishes to speak. Councillor Giles, you want?
Yeah, as my colleague councillor Emery said, we kind of did expect an amendment, which is partly why I kind of preempted it in my seconding of our motion. I struggle with this so much, because you say that you're doing all of these things fantastic, and I think the politicisation of the amended motion is very interesting, because actually, I don't think it's fair in politics to give credit where credit is due. Things like Hounslow Business First Initiative is due to finish at the end of December. What is going to happen next? That's part of the reason why we asked for it to be extended. Yeah, and I think it will be interesting to see what's happening there. I think what we've seen, and I'm very grateful that there was a lot of our recommendations included, but I think that you got rid of a lot of the punch that it could have packed. And I think, you know, some of these issues mainly costing, we need to follow them out, but if you're already doing it, how do, why do we not know about it? Why is it that even though you look through the council website and you'll look at information, there'll be press releases from two years ago and not much else? And so for that point, I don't think we can support this motion, so thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Giles. Councillor McGregor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've had a range of statistics and values bandied around this evening, that's all part of the political punch and duty. One of the key things that the administration here have neglected to mention is that fewer than one in three electors actually voted for them in July. And more than two out of three did not vote for them. That is not a substantial value that you can actually take back to the electorate, particularly with the local elections in 2026. So I'm looking forward very much to the next set of elections, because we have every confidence that the wheels will come off the central administration, and therefore the issues that we're talking about here will also fail, because the government will fail in the same way that previous Labour governments have always failed by going off to the IMF and asking for support. The situation we face now, as a result of this budget and the result of this plan that's being put forward, is dire. And I'm pretty certain also that another issue here, which I would put to councillor Chadbury as chair of the audit committee, was to tell the council, when was the last time she spoke to the audit partner at Forbes Mazars about when we're going to get our set of audited accounts? Because you cannot, as councillor Todd said earlier, build a plan or a budget from a set of unaudited figures, because you don't know whether the balance sheet is viable. This is a very, very important issue for all of us here. And if you don't understand what I'm saying, I'm more than happy to talk to you privately, to go through the issues with you, because this is really becoming a bit of a shambles. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I urge the council to vote against the amendment.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. Councillor Bidolf, would you like to sum up now, please?
There hasn't been any scaremongering from us whatsoever. We've been factual and picking up information given to us, given to the public by retailers and others. I've spoken to many traders outside Chiswick too and in the borough, they have, they are all scared, that's where the scaring is. And I'm sorry, the leader is busy on his phone while I'm responding to his comments. I won't name them in the chamber, because they speak to me confidentially. If you think I'm making it up, that's a really awful accusation to make. I have spoken to traders, I can name them later, but I will not name them publicly. They do not deserve to have their state of their businesses revealed in public. I think fundamental rule of us is confidentiality. You may well have done some things, but the trouble is they're tired, they've been done over and over and over again. We came up with new ideas. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, but could we please stop the interruptions? It's noises off continuously in this borough.
Can we have some order, please?
So you've been repeating the same old tired courses, many of which, I do speak mostly for retail hospitality and service businesses, irrelevant to them. They do not need the sorts of courses that you have been providing through various consultancies from outside the borough. Change is needed, and we have ideas aplenty, we've put some of them here, there are many more to come. The problem with this is you have given us rhetoric, you accuse us of it, which in fact, that's what you've done. There was very little in what you said that was specific. We had a lot of self-congratulation. When businesses are on the brink, it's insulting to hard-working retailers and business owners who will be at home now, wondering how or even if they can make a living, employing staff, providing services, supporting supplier businesses who are also part of the chain. If that is the reaction here, when we've got a very serious motion about protecting our high streets, which need a huge amount of help, and when we've had many suggestions made before by us, then this motion does not deserve to be supported.
Thank you, councillor Bidolf. Could we now move to the vote, please? So, members in favour of the recommendations? Thank you. Members against the recommendations? And do we have any abstentions? Okay, the motion is, the motion as amended is carried, thank you very much. We therefore now move on to the third motion, which can be found as Agenda item nineteen. Members will again observe as the supplementary agenda, an amendment to this motion has been proposed. I therefore invite councillor Tony Lukey to propose the motion.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Nice to do this, I haven't done this for a long time. And I won't stand up, because it's very easy to shoot at me with daggers, with daggers from the eyes even. Right, tonight's motion highlights a poor privately-run South Western Railway, particularly on our beloved Hounslow Loop, serve now borough's seven stocks, the whipping boy of London's suburban train service. Passengers using Chiswick, Kew Bridge, Brentford, Sion Lane, Isleworth, Hounslow and Feltham, the fourth and fifth of these stations in the mighty Osterlin Spring Grove Ward, have seen the victims of, have been the victims of ad hoc morning peak cancellations this past year, some with no warning. All the while, the franchise gifted by Conservative Transport Minister Chris Failing Grayling, he's now a lord, isn't he, they put him up there, to operators, operators and owners, first group with Hong Kong-based MTR in 2017 cashed in. Last year it made two hundred and sixty-eight million pounds in profit, one hundred and forty-five million of that, fifty-four percent was government subsidy. So again, Conservative government spending their money wisely, our money wisely. Under their contracts, rail firms have to seek Department of Transport approval to pay dividends, so those payments will have had Conservative ministerial backing. The first MTR South Western annual report showed the firm takes few risks to get these easy rewards. They were chuffed, or should I say troughed, to say that, thanks to the National Rail Contract, the firm, and this is in quotation marks from the chairman, holds no revenue risk and very little limited cost risk that is proportional to the, proportional to the reward available to the operator, i.e. money for nothing, more or less. Under the last Conservative Rail Minister Merriman, the Department of Transport also extended South Western Rail's contract for two more years until May next year. This, I hope, will be it. In addition, we will ask this council's leadership to call for it to be, to bring the services back home, making the case and lobby hard for the restoration of the ninety-four to twenty twenty-four trains an hour service on the Hounslow Loop. No more and no more arbitrary cancellations. Some people say that there was no, there was always two trains an hour, there was never, there were two trains an hour up until GSK getting built. GSK gave us money, and they put, they gave us money for the lift at Brentford Station to, to put, to put four trains an hour in. During their tenures franchisees, there have been a few, there have been few direct investments by South Western Railway in our stations. Station lifts at Sion Lane and Isleworth, together with the mooted installation at Kew Bridge, our Hounslow Council Network Rail and Department for Transport initiatives. We put nearly a million pounds into Sion Lane and a similar amount into Isleworth. When, when, when Johnson was mayor of London, as an aside, when Johnson was mayor of London, he cancelled the lift at Osterly Station. There are lifts at Osterly Station now, but they were paid for through, by TFL, by the new mayor for London at the time. Ministers for Rail, Minister for Rail, Lord Peter Hendy of Richmond Hill, whose record in operating transport is infinitely better than that of his predecessors. I'm also pleased to note the high-speed progress of the Passenger Rail Services Public Ownership Bill. I'm also pleased to note the high speed progress of the Passenger Rail Services Public Ownership Bill working its way through Parliament, tabled in the Commons by Secretary of State Louise Hague, MP, steered through the Lords by Baron Peter Hendy. Earlier this month, the Lords, that place, at the Lords, that place agreed an amendment whereby first piece of rail legislation from the new government not only meets Labour's manifesto commitment to public ownership of the railways, long time, remember rail track, but would allow further rail lines to be transferred to metro, metro mayors and local and regional authorities. That's, that's our, that's our opportunity. The Hounslow Loop at least would be a strong candidate for when the South Western Railway is brought back under Great British Railways. This is the desire of long suffering users and that of locally elected members.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Local accountability in public transport delivery is key. Here in Hounslow, we should be buoyed by Minister Hendy's affirmation that Labour Government is absolutely committed to strengthening the role of local communities in shaping the provision of rail. The railways, railways bill will include a statutory role for the mayor and Greater London Authority. I would welcome the leader of the council to additionally write to the mayor, deputy mayor, TFL commissioner, secretary of state and rail minister setting out, yeah, I know, a lot of letters, mate, setting out Hounslow's demand for improved services to the Hounslow Loop, including the serious consideration of the Hounslow Loop being considered for devolution to London. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, stop it, stop it.
I would now like to invite councillor Marina Sharma to second the motion and speak if she wishes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm very pleased to second this motion. A motion which calls for something so simple but vital to our residents, a reliable and frequent rail service. The current state of the South Western Railway service on the Hounslow Loop with frequent cancellations and reduced weekend schedules is unacceptable for a borough that relies heavily on this vital transport link. It is essential that service levels not only return to pre-COVID standards but are enhanced to meet the growing demands of our community. And this does not just affect our residents but our borough's reputation. I'm a proud to be, I'm a proud to be a councillor for Brentford East and it goes without saying that Brentford Football Club is a proud symbol of our community. It's a club that brings together people from all walks of life and it matches, and at its matches are not just about football. They're a social occasion that brings energy, excitement and an undeniable sense of belonging. Getting to and from the stadium should be a simple seamless experience. However, that is not the reality when it comes to South Western Railway's service on match days. While services on match day Saturdays do increase to one every 15 minutes, that is not enough for the thousands of football fans who come to our borough during these days and there is still unacceptable congestion at Q Bridge Station, the closest station to the G-Tech Stadium. Something needs to be done to improve services, not just for our residents but for the outside fans and visitors who come to visit and watch their team and who contribute to our local economy by coming there. This is why I fully support the council's initiative to engage with the managing director of South Western Railway, the Secretary of State for Transport and all relevant stakeholders, including our local members of parliament. Together, we can work towards a solution that ensures accessibility, reliability and improved service levels across the Hounslow Loop. By seconding this motion, I pledge my support to continue striving for a transport network that truly serves the needs of the Hounslow community.
Thank you, councillor Sharma. We now come to the proposed amendment, which members can find in the supplementary agenda. I invite councillor Ranjit Gill to introduce it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Unlike my fellow councillor Lukey, I'm willing to stand up and I'm not afraid of the daggers, but I don't think my Labour comrades do stare at me, so. But I will take my, I will take my cue from the leader of the council, councillor Rajuwa. This is a helpful amendment. Whilst I fully support the motion's overall intent to address the vital issues facing the crucial part of our transport network, and who wouldn't support such a motion, we all do. I believe it is important that this council takes a balanced and accurate view of how, I repeat, how we arrived at this point and where we should be heading. The topic of rail nationalisation, while a matter of significant political debate, is outside the remit of this council. Including it in this motion risks detracting from the immediate practical issues we need to address. I believe our residents want not just ideology. Furthermore, this amendment recognises that many of the improvements already achieved on the Hounslow Loop, such as the accessibility upgrades at Isaworth and Sign Lane, were made possible, guess what, by the funding and decisions of the previous central government. This is a matter of fairness and accuracy. I'm just asking for us to be fair and accurate. And I hope all councillors will see the importance of acknowledging this. Madam Mayor, this amendment also emphasises the importance of local insight in decision-making. Ward councillors are uniquely positioned to understand the needs and priorities of their communities. And I think we all know that we have to make our decisions for our communities and not for ourselves. By encouraging the involvement of ward councillors and other local representatives in discussions about the future of the Hounslow Loop, we ensure that decisions are not only well informed but also truly, I repeat, truly representative of the voices of our residents. Ultimately, Madam Mayor, this amendment removes divisive and speculative language and reinforces this motion on, which is most important, collaboration and practical solutions. I believe it allows us to present ourselves as constructive, pragmatic and focused on the outcomes of our residents of Hounslow. I urge all those present today here, our councillors, to support this amendment as we need to send a very important message, a unified message, I should say, that we are serious about improving services for our local residents and that we are, I repeat, we are committed to working together to achieve this goal. So I hope you would accept this amendment because it's a helpful amendment. Taking my cue again from the leader of the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Gill. I'm now inviting councillor Giles to second the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm bored. I don't know about you, but I am bored of consistently and continuously standing up in this place to spend councillor time to debate a motion with results that tell the leader to write letters and engage with local organisations that operate locally. Forgive me for getting this wrong, but is it not part of your job? Or is it that backbenchers don't have faith that he doesn't do this simple action as par for the course? Aside from the political rhetoric of this, of the original motion, there is much that we support within, there's much that we support within it. And the service provided by Southwest Rail is vital to our area communities, as we've already heard. I, I think what we have to ask ourselves is how many of us are already engaging with Southwest on a regular basis? So I'm just going to ask for a show of hand. So how many people here have attended the Southwest Rail stakeholder calls that take place on a quarterly basis? Good, a few. Did anyone attend the Southwest Rail Stakeholder Conference last Thursday? No, unfortunately, I was planning to go, but I had another commitment, so I couldn't make it. But I'm going to be honest with you, because these are engagements that could regularly happen. And they do regularly happen. And actually, at one of the earliest calls, we were informed that attendees on passenger numbers are not up to pre-pandemic levels. I'm not entirely sure how we in this house, in this place, are responsible for changing that because working habits simply haven't returned to the way that they were before the pandemic. I think even within our own council, we don't have a fully, we still operate on a remote basis a lot of the time. And I think there are other complications and I think we do need to take these into consideration is that things like logistics at Clapham Junction are vital. It's one of the busiest junctions in Europe, I believe, in the world. And so things like how that impacts our train service are really, really important and we don't have control over that. And I think we also have to, with our amendment, we've also tried to do, tried to give credit where credit is due because actually at the last call, there was an involvement on, there was a reference made to the fact that there is a feasibility study for step free access due to take place for Q Bridge as well. And I think I'd also like to take this opportunity to remind everybody that applications are now open for the Customer and Community Fund. We in Hounslow were previously a recipient last year and we received funding for cycle repair training last year. And it, it shows that they are already a partner that we could work with and we should be doing this as, as par for the course. So I do have to wonder, why are we spending our time, again, debating a motion when this should be part of the operational norm? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Giles. Councillor Lukey, do you accept the proposed amendment?
What do you think? No, disgraceful, okay, Jezza. No, 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 Madam Mayor, I don't.
Okay, thank you very much. In which case we move on to debate the proposed amendment only. So first, I would like to call councillor Mashiso.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is very interesting and I would like to echo councillor Gill's comments earlier about, this is an opportunity for us as a council to unite behind a cause, which is to bring better services to our communities, better public services. What can you, you can't argue against that. That's something that we all want. But the question is, how do we get there? How do we get to better services? Now, we have members on the opposite side who believe that in order for us to get to better services, we need to take things out of private hands and into public ownership. But there are dangers associated with that kind of move. And I think the members opposite don't fully understand what that means. Firstly, we lose that flexibility. We lose that opportunity to, to change things. If a company isn't doing well, it would collapse. So it's up to them to make sure that they are doing their utmost. When it's in the public hands, there could be takeovers at any, at a drop of a hat. Markets would change. If those markets change, we'll get new owners that we are, we're not aware who they are. We're not, we're not sure what they, what they, what they come from. So we have an opportunity here. This, this motion actually gives us that opportunity to bring everybody together here as a council. We haven't done anything of concrete as a cross-party, but here is our chance. Here is our chance. Here's our chance, as councillor Giles has said, to look at step free access and not just Q Bridge, but look at all the stations on the loop. Here's our chance to really champion those sort of causes. Here is also our chance to improve standards. How many of us each and every single weekend try to get to London, central London, and the trains have been cancelled? And not only have they been cancelled, but the bus that replaces them isn't coming at the time that it said it would. Here's our chance again to speak to the management of South West Trains and improve that communication across. Now, we have the leader of the council, who this afternoon, we understand, has now been promoted onto the London council itself. Well, there is our opportunity to get behind him and make sure that, there's our opportunity to get behind him as a cross-party to make sure that we can put the pressure on, on this private company and make sure that we get the standards increased. The solution, I'm afraid, isn't to take things into public ownership. That's what Labour want to do, but this isn't about Labour and Conservative. This is about something that is already in place and we're trying to make it better. Now, there was one other mention earlier about pre-COVID levels of, of service. We, I think councillor Sharma mentioned it. Yes, we want to return back to pre-COVID, but remember, pre-COVID levels, the South West Trains were still in private ownership then, so nothing has changed. It's about improving services, not about tearing it apart and starting fresh. So I do welcome this motion. I welcome councillor, councillor Gill's motion, amendment. But I think it gives us the opportunity for us to have a serious conversation. Now, if we are serious about this, we're not playing party politics, we will take heed to what councillor Giles, councillor Gill and councillor Giles have said and will support this, you know, this coming together of a group of councillors who are elected to serve and provide a service. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Mashiso. Councillor Rajuwa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm certainly not bored, but I am slightly confused because their contributions seem to contradict each other and aren't really coordinated. But, you know, that's, that's, I've got a lot of respect for councillor Gill and I appreciate that from his perspective, he has offered this amendment up as an attempt to work collaboratively and be solutions focused. I know none of the amendments, to coin councillor Bidol's phrase, have any actions attached. They're all our original recommendations just rehashed. All they've done is to take out any reference to their government. So, you know, that's, that's, that's for you. That's for you. That's fine. I mean, I.
Could we have some order while people are speaking, please?
To, 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 to talk to councillor Mashiso's point, no. We, we don't believe that everything should be public. But railways have been, have been nationalised by his government because they've been failing for years and years. Substance has been going in and they've been passed on to shareholders while service has been failing. So I'm, I'm trying to understand the point that you were making there. But ultimately, to talk, to lecture us about ideology and then try and take ideology out of a motion that criticises their government will not be supportive whatsoever. And neither it should be. And so we won't be supporting this amendment. What councillor Lukey has proposed in the original amendment is tangible. And to your point, councillor Giles, you, you may be, you, you as a group may find it funny that I write a number of letters, but I will never make any apology for talking up Hounslow, for making the case for investment and pushing hard. You can joke, we are taking the actions.
Okay, um, could I just make sure I know who wants to speak on the amendment, please? Does anyone else want to speak on the amendment? Councillor Bidol?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been late for a family funeral because a train's, a platform change was not announced to passengers and the train I needed to be on left whilst I was waiting for the one that came later, which I knew would not get there, get me there in time. That's not an argument for nationalisation. That's an argument for local management and local training. Somebody needed to be, and I'm sorry that he's looking at his phone again while I speak. It seems to be a pattern. That, and there he goes again. The installation of lifts, of course, is welcome, but please let's not kid ourselves that that means that stations are necessarily step free. Even people with good knees find it very difficult to get onto a train and step down from a train onto the platform. And you can laugh, perhaps your knees are fine. So don't get as much exercise as mine do. It's impossible. Well, yes, that's your hands. It's a serious point and my knees are getting increasingly weak. But you can't get up to a train and you can't step off one easily at, for example, Q Bridge or further around on the loop outside the borough as well. Again, that's not a point about nationalisation. What I'd like to know is whether the council made any applications to the Access for All scheme, which announced, we announced in May 2024, the government put another slug of money into it, £350 million, fought specifically for step free access. So it's a disappointment to us if that wasn't applied for because that could have made a huge difference to our residents who, like me, find it difficult getting off and on one of the trains on the Hounslow Loop. So as I said, it's not about nationalisation, it's about local improvements and applying for other people. for other people's money, which you're very good at, to achieve the aims that are needed on the loop.
Thank you councillor Bidolf.
Madam Mayor, at point of order, could we, could we please put the question on the-
I was just about to move to the vote. Assuming nobody else wants to speak to the amendment, let's move to the vote. So I'd like to ask, who is in favour of the amendment? And who is against the amendment? And are there any abstentions? No. So the amendment has failed and we move on to discuss the original motion. Okay, so who, I'm sorry, can people put their hand up again if they want to speak on the original motion? So councillor Chaudry, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And not to sound like a broken record, but I'd like to put a record to thank the leader for writing letters and having conversations that he has been having, which do lead to the best interests of our residents, because if you don't do that, you don't have these conversations. As he mentioned, action does not happen, you just sit and talk about it. So anyway, let's move on. Last week, we saw a momentous occasion, the passing of the Passenger Railway Services Public Ownership Bill, a key step of the Williams Review, launched by Chris Grayling, of all people. Yeah. Bringing track and train back together once again. So while Boris, Liz, Rishi, well, they all differed, but this government, what have they done? They've delivered. This means we will see a nationalised railway once more, focused on people, not on profit. What is currently a lot of good people, so for example, Matt Evans and Lindsay Robson-Malone, who I met at the opening of the lifts at Isford Station, and continued a good dialogue with alongside the lead member for transport, Catherine Dunn. Those are people who have been working inside a broken system, which was largely controlled by the Treasury, thanks to the decisions taken by the party opposite. The industry can't run a marketing campaign to grow revenue or meet passenger demand on the Hounslow Loop, and this is going to change. So during the passage of the bill by Lord Hendy of, as councillor Lukey's mentioned, Richmond Hill, no doubt a user of the Loop, what he said was, "The government are absolutely committed to strengthening the role for local communities in shaping the design and delivery of passenger rail services in the area. A stronger local voice is absolutely essential if the railway is to play its full part in this government's mission of kickstarting economic growth, breaking down barriers to opportunities and accelerating that towards net zero." Indeed, it is rumoured, this will be enshrined in the English Revolution White Paper. This paves the way to our service-forming parts of the London Overground, a big change to the cynical approach taken by Johnson and Grayling as soon as we saw a Labour mayor. This is why this motion is vital to kickstart the change towards living better for our borough. Turning to the Hounslow Loop, the current service is abysmal. It steps down from four trains to early at the weekends and demand is now outstripping services. We see one, yes, one, if we're lucky, train an hour on a Sunday morning, or, as has happened recently, no trains at all, which are cancelled to last minute, or as councillor Bidolf said, platform changes. That is a disgrace, especially given that a lot of the housing targets that we've been talking about, so if we look at Tesco Homebase, they're reliant, indeed conditioned, on the service pattern that should at least be restored, if not bettered. This railway connects us all the way from Feltham to Chiswick, and I hope councillors on both sides here today will support the motion as it benefits all of our residents. With South Western Railway exiting potentially as early as spring 2025, the only way to get these services and all our residents to, the services our residents deserve, is to engage directly with the mayor, TFL ministers, the DFT. And yes, that could be letter writing, and yes, that could be speaking to them directly, but whatever way the leader sees fit is the way that will be the way to do it. And I hope we can commit to ensuring we engage with them. So as I mentioned, this motion will deliver economic growth and opportunity across the borough, and it will be supporting the strides of the council, that way, you know, the Labour Council are trying to deliver for our residents in this borough. And I support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chaudry, councillor Thompson, please.
No, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not going to be like that good. We, when we bought a house in 2000, it sort of backs on to the train line and the estate agent assured us that the noise wouldn't be too bad because the service was only twice, twice an hour, that was in, that was in 1999. Then obviously in 2004, it doubled and you stick in all the freight trains, it's not quite as quiet, little bit of the chizzy backwaters I thought I was moving into, but we're, we're still there and got used to the noise. I, I wasn't planning to speak and that's what, perhaps will make a lot of sense, but I think while we're not going to support it, is obvious, that we don't actually believe that the nationalisation is going to work. I think a few of us actually in this room have long memories and the idea that it was all wonderful back in the days of British Rail doesn't make much sense. And I'm very mindful that the usage of the train system has doubled since privatisation. I think it's dangerous perhaps to base motions like this on personal experience. I catch it most days, I can't actually remember the last time it was late. Occasionally they are cancelled because they often say that the driver's missing or the earliest one broke down at wherever, you know, and, and yeah, leaves, leaves on the track. And obviously it was a bit of a pain when it was closed because of the serious works at Q Bridge that had to be done. I totally agree about weekends, that's bonkers that it's just once an hour. You know, you miss, missing normally, there's 10, 12, 13, 14 minutes to wait and normally it rocks up. I think councillor Giles' point there is very valid about the usage of the service, because if you catch it on Friday, like I do, it's virtually empty because people aren't travelling in. It's not particularly for, again, when I manage to get out of school pronto, it's not particularly, no problems with seats. Again, this is at Q Bridge in the mornings between sort of seven, seven thirty, and no problems coming back from Vauxhall later in the day. If you'd taken that little bit out, we would have agreed to it. Yeah, by all means have those conversations. I, I, that's what I did, I wrote lots of letters, but they were real ones too, back in those days, on, on bits of paper. And I had serious conversations with people who impacted and did things in Hounslow. So for example, in 2009, I spoke to Barretts and Barretts were supposed to be replacing Heston Swimming Pool, but Barretts couldn't deliver. So I had a choice, didn't I? Either we kept on with this sort of a charade that Barretts were going to come along and improve it, or we pulled the plug in 2009 and then we started looking at alternatives. So it wasn't quite true what you said earlier about, you know, I pulled the plug, Barretts weren't going to do it. If anyone knows anything about Barretts and Hounslow, their record of delivery for us perhaps hasn't always been the best. So by all means have the conversations, have the meetings, you, you use, use all the, all the pressure and the influence you can, but we're not going to vote for it. And it's very simple, we just don't think, yeah, yeah, privatisation was never the solution to all the world's problems. My goodness, how bad things were before. You know, just cash your mind back, there was no choice. The service was rubbish and this was across the line. You know, who remembers in this room how, you know, the, the choice of the, the phone that they fitted into your house was whether you wanted a blue one, a green one, a brown one or a red one? That, that was choice. You know, that you went along to Thomas Cook for your holiday, who are owned by the government. How bonkers was that? And the list goes on. You know, my family suffered massively due to the changes to steel, you know, come from Sheffield, you know, lost the job down the road with the miners, but that was just not sustainable. And this country could not keep on pouring money in and in and in. So let's, let's be charitable. I hope Great British Rail will put things right, but I'm doubtful. And because it's in that motion, we ain't going to support it. But having said all that, all the rest of it, the chats, the conversations, the letters, the emails and the rest, by all means, get on with it.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I welcome this motion and I thank my comrades who have spoken in favour of the motion with passionate speeches. I don't have a lot to add to, to what has already been said, but I want to say that as the lead member for transport, I do welcome this motion, I do hope that we pass this motion here tonight, and that, and that if we do, then I will work, work with the spirit of the motion to ensure that we do get improvements on that line. Our local Hounslow transport strategy, which we're currently redeveloping at the moment, we've been talking to residents across the borough about what they want to see from transport in Hounslow. And when it comes to public transport, reliability, frequency, accessibility are all incredibly important to our residents and can make the difference between using public transport or using another form of transport like a private car. In addition, sorry, I have mentioned accessibility, we have carried out an audit of all the stations in the borough in, with a view to making them all step free with partners, obviously, and with getting that funding in. And so Q Bridge Station and Gunnersbury both have received funding from Access For All to, for, to, to be looked at, to, to see what improvements can be made there to make them step free. So we will continue to engage with ward councillors, oh, councillor Gill's gone, but I did want to make that point to him. We will continue to engage with members across the borough and with our residents on what they want and how that we can work together to improve things. And we will work with South Western Railway, with whoever follows South Western Railway, whatever the model of ownership. It's not a case of saying one thing good, one thing bad. We know that, that, that public ownership models can fail. That's not the point here. The point is, it is failing currently and interventions need to be made. So I welcome the motion and hope that we will vote for it tonight so that we can move forward on this issue.
Thank you councillor Dunn. Councillor Vikram Geroel, if you can be very brief, please, and then I'd like to go to Tony Lukey to sum up, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Super brief, I was, I wasn't planning to speak on this, but I was inspired by two things. One was the enthusiasm from councillor Mashiso when his leader was standing up to speak. And the second actually was the leader of the opposition and his speech. So I'd love to know which train, sir, you, you catch, because I, I go into the city four days a week and more often than not, the trains are either delayed or cancelled on a very regular basis. So things can get only better, like a very famous election slogan in 97. And with the railways, I'm sure that is the case, but I will not talk down our, our infrastructure that much more. But what we heard from the budget, as well as the mansion house speech from our chancellor, was that there is a clear push towards investment in the infrastructure of this country. We will not look to cancel schemes like HS2 and other schemes to improve our railway and other public transportation networks and improvements like the previous government, but instead invest in the long-term future of this country and its long overdue investment in our infrastructure, in particular the railway. So public ownership is needed. Yes, it might not be perfect, but by, by God, privatisation of it has not worked at all for users on a regular basis. So that, that's a very brief point. Two other points, Madam Mayor, if you may allow me. A very famous quote, "The pen is more powerful than the sword, is it not?" So that's about our leader and his letters for our residents. And secondly, although some backbenchers may not clap every moment for our leader and his speeches, that does not mean we are fully behind every word that he says in this chamber on our behalf. So I will leave it there, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you councillor Geroel. And councillor Bidolf?
Just a very, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, just a very quick question really, and to say thank you very much, if step free does not just mean lifts, it does mean actually step free. But is what councillor Dunn said the equivalent of accepting our line that councillors from all wards, which include South West Rail Services, would be included? Is that an amendment that she is accepting? It was, I know you haven't accepted the whole amendment, but does your comment about including councillors include that you will include us formally in those, in your last statement there?
I said, and councillor Gill, glad that you're back in the room, because I said that we will continue to engage with ward councillors across the borough.
Thank you very much councillor Bidolf. Councillor Lukey, would you like to sum up, please?
In the immortal words of Mel Collins, "I'll be brief." So look, no, this, this, this turned into, this turned into a discussion and it was not an intended discussion on privatised good, nationalised bad. We are where we are. There is a, there is a, as, as the leader said earlier on, we've got such a big majority in Parliament, we've got these bills rushing through Parliament and this is where we're going to be. The, the, the secretary of state, the secretary of state did indicate that possibly one or possibly both of South West Train, South West Railway and C to C franchises will, yeah, will, will be the first to be brought back into the fold. Already, we've got five, we've got five railway companies of, that, that did get taken over by, by the government. They, they don't get taken over, they don't get taken over by private organisations, they get taken over by the government, including, including the ones where there is competition going up the North East. And, and I have taken the Lumo train to, to and from Edinburgh before, but, you know, there, there's a very limited choice on this. What is important, what is important is where we are here in Hounslow and what we can do and, and put the marker down in Hounslow for improvements on the, on, on the Hounslow Loop. It's, it's a really good, it would be a really good express service, regular 10-minute, 10-minute service from Waterloo to Waterloo on the loop if that was, if that was taken up and if we advocated for it. Yes, there are other, there are other issues. We've got no problem, we have no problem in Ossley's Spring Grove Ward of, of talking to, to South Western Railway, yeah, all Conservatives for that matter. In fact, Conservatives in, in our ward do vote for us. That's why we get re-elected, because it is a Conservative ward nominally, all right? We don't know how long it will last, but we deliver there, okay? And we deliver there because we care. So that's, so, so I'm not really interested, councillor Mashiso, in, in your stupidness. And that, that is, that, yes, no, okay, oh, yeah, no, okay.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, is that, is that allowed in the standing orders?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. I would have allowed it if I was mayor, when I was mayor, all right? All right? So-
Councillor Lukey, please.
All right, okay, all right, okay. He, he, he's done this then, I would say.
Could you withdraw the comment, please?
All right, I'll withdraw it, but he knows, everyone else knows what I'm trying to say. The, so what we've got here, anybody can talk to Network Rail and we do, anyone, anyone can do, anyone can talk to South Western Railway, but we'll find it much easier talking to people who understand what we, we like and what we want in, in the London-
Councillor Mashiso, what-
I'm sorry, but he has not withdrawn that comment.
He did withdraw the comment.
No, he has not. I would like to redraw that comment, that is extremely rude.
He said he withdrew the comment.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, that is extremely rude, I would like him to withdraw that comment, thank you.
Councillor Mashiso, councillor Lukey has already withdrawn the comment.
He has not withdrawn that comment. Ask the returning officer, ask the monitoring officer if that is true, because I have not heard a withdrawal. I would like a withdrawal of that comment, thank you.
The councillor, the monitoring officer also heard him withdraw the comment, thank you, that's the end of the matter. It was withdrawn. Councillor Lukey, would you like to finish speaking?
I, I'd like to finish speaking without, without interruption from people who want to, you know, want to have their cakes and eat them. The, the thing is, this is a very simple, a very simple motion highlighting issues- The thing is, this is a very simple, a very simple motion highlighting issues that matter to people that use muttering, muttering again, really, really. You can't stop, can you? I'll leave it there, I'll leave it there and I'll urge my colleagues to vote for the substantive motion.
Thank you councillor Lukey. I'd now like to move to the vote on the original motion, please. So could you raise your hands if you're in favour of the motion? And if you're against? And are there any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. The motion is carried. Agenda item 20, there are no urgent matters that have been brought to my attention. Councillor Chaudry?
Sorry, can I just address a matter that councillor McGregor raised earlier? Because this is the second Borough Council where he's criticised the Audit and Governance Committee without having spoken to me about it at all or come to me to ask me these questions. Because if he came to me to ask me rather than trying to bring it here, I'd have happily answered the question that he asked. So I'm happy for him to come and speak to me outside of this.
That's, it's not the right time, but I accept your comment. Thank you. And so we move on to the date of the next meeting. And that will be on Tuesday, the 25th of February 2025. Thank you everyone for attending the meeting. Could everyone sign the attendance book if they have not already done so? I'd like to remind councillors, I'm still speaking, that there will be a festive mayoral reception immediately after the council photograph on Tuesday, the 10th of December, starting at 6:30pm. This is the last council meeting of the year and I wish everyone a very happy Christmas break and a good New Year. Thank you.